Web, council meeting come to order. Worthington City Council Regular Meeting Agenda 5:30 PM, Monday, September 11th, 2023. City Hall Council Chambers. I'd like everybody to rise that's able to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any additions or changes to the agenda, so have motion to?
Move.
Okay, motion seconded. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto the consent agendas that we've got tonight. City Council Minutes, regular city council meeting minutes of August 28th, 2023. Water and Light Commission's meeting minutes of September 5th, 2023. PJC Joint Operations Committee meeting minutes of August 9th, 2023. Worthington Public Arts Commission meeting minutes of August 8th, 2023. And bills payable.
Move, consent.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto City Council Business Administration.
First item is a new off sale beer license application from Quick Trip Incorporated, which they submitted for their new location at 1755 North Humiston Avenue, anticipating opening on September 28th, later this month. License period would run from September 28th through December 31st of 2023. All the required paperwork and fees have been submitted. Council approval is requested.
Any discussion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next one is resolution proposing the, approving the proposed 2023 tax levies collectible in 2024. Attached as Exhibit 2 is the resolution approving the proposed City Worthington tax levy of $7,739,156. This amount breaks down to an operating levy of $6,702,011 and special tax levies of $1,037,145. The proposed levy represents an 18% increase over the 2023 levy. The proposed levy is an amount not to exceed and may be lowered but not raised for final levy certification in December. Also included as Exhibit 3 is a resolution approving the Housing and Redevelopment Authority's 2024 proposed levy of $186,000, which is an increase of $35,000 over 2023. City Council will hold a meeting on December 11th at 5:30 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers to discuss the final 2024 budget and levy. Truth and Taxation Hearing will be held at that time where public input will be taken prior to adoption. Council action is requested to adopt the resolutions approving the proposed 2023 tax levies collectible in 2024. And I'll just-
Need to do separate for the HRA?
Yes, we would need a motion and approval on each of the two separate resolutions. And just to reiterate our discussion from a couple of weeks ago regarding the city's 2024 levy, even though our preliminary budget came in at 14.2% increase, we're asking council to consider bumping that up to give us enough room in the event some unexpected expenditures show up. We have not yet received our health insurance renewals. That's, and I did have a conversation with the county attorney today, and the county commissioners have requested that the, our prosecuting attorney contract be adjusted. They, they charge as 25% of their office operating expenses. The county commissioners are recommending that that be raised to 30%. We have in our preliminary budget, based on the 25% that they had given us earlier in the, in the month or two ago. If the new contract comes through at 30%, that would raise their, their budget by about $55,000 for the coming year.
And by the time we have to fully certify, we should have health and also our full tax capacity through assessed values?
Yes, we should, we meet first week of October to review proposals for the health insurance. And the county auditor treasurer has indicated that by mid-October, they will have the information on the net adjusted tax capacity for the city, of which we would then have the complete information to determine the tax rate. So we, we're actually in a very good situation right now, but we're just asking for a little adjustment room in the event something unexpected crops up.
Uh, rationale for the prosecuting attorney going from 25 to 30% is?
That is based on their calculations of time actually spent on city-
Who's there?
Uh, the county attorney's office. They said that over the years, that city prosecutions have taken up 30 to 32% of their office time. And that's, was the basis of the county commissioners recommending, or their budget committee recommending increasing the city's contractual share. Brayden Holford and I have spoken about this a couple of times in the last two weeks. And he will address the council at a, at an upcoming work session to lay out all of the facts and figures of what their office does on behalf of the city.
I'd move to adopt the pre-certified levy increase as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I'd also move the HRA adoption of their resolution for the 2023 tax levies.
I have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Is that, like, we're approving that one, that's not proposed? The HRA?
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's asking, right?
I'm asking.
Theirs isn't subject to reduction? That's what you're?
That's my, my question.
It stays the same now as it is as a final?
Yeah.
And the way that they come up with that number is it's based on what the market, what the value of the property is. So we got the number from the county, and the HRA properties are now valued above $1 billion. And that this was the calculation of that number, what came back down. It's like a, yeah, a certain percentage. So that's why it did increase from last year pretty substantially, but it's because of the valuations of the property.
Okay, so we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just have one case item. It's a change order for the Sunset Parking Lot Project. Ideal Landscaping, our contractor at the Sunset Parking Lot Project has a change order for the project. It's Exhibit 1 in your packet. This change order would include additional costs for stump removal and additional removal costs for unexpected soil conditions. The proposed amount of this change order is $14,171.30. Proving this change order would bring our total contract price to $473,698.05. Council action is requested to approve this change order. I'll explain a little bit. The stumps were, the city's responsible, they had to cut down. And we left them up a little higher because it would have taken us a long time, and it was just by the tonnage, so we had a, we had a bid item for that. So there was a little extra tonnage when they hauled them out. And the other one is, we ran into a concrete retaining wall that they put in there for when they filled it up with dredge soil. And that's where our, it was concrete that they had tore out of projects and stacked on top of each other. And we had to remove that to get our water line in. So this is just a cost for what it cost us to haul out the contaminated concrete soil. And we have all the, the tonnage and stuff from the landfill that was hauling and the landfill cost. And the landfill actually gave us a really good deal for it. It was at City Worthington, it was like half price, so.
I just want to comment, it's referred to as contaminated soil, but in fact, it's not contaminated in the usual sense of what we think. It's, it's debris laden soil.
Yep.
So there's no chemical hazardous material?
No. It was just too much concrete mixed in when they tried to dig it out, and it was not usable for anything. We could have probably tried to filter it out, the concrete, haul it out, but the soil wasn't useful for anything, and we didn't have anywhere to go with it the way it was, so we ended up hauling it out.
Just chunks of concrete that were placed in there to stabilize the, really the bank along the creek.
It's about seven foot tall, and they built it up with just crushed concrete or concrete that they tore out of projects, and they just, I would assume to keep the dredge fill that they filled in there from going into the creek a hundred years ago or 50 years ago, or whatever it was, so.
Any other questions?
Move to approve the change order in the amount of $14,171.30.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like we, engineering, yeah.
Hello? Yeah, um, first item. Declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment. Exhibit 1 contains a resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment. Paving improvement number 119, 2022, B2 minutes pavement improvements of Apple Avenue, Bristol Street, Cynthia Avenue, Eleanor Street, West Oxford Street. Exhibit 1-1 resolution is that one. Next one is for 2023 miscellaneous unpaid charges for removal of ice and snow, removal of noxious weed and vegetation. Steph recommends that council pass the two resolutions in Exhibit 1 for paving improvements and the special service and charges for the additional assessment.
Council, any questions? Motion?
Why are the paving improvements and snow removal in the same?
It's two different resolutions.
Two different resolutions?
You just said it at one, okay.
So we should have a motion on two separate motions.
Yep.
Thank you, that makes more sense in my head.
I'd move to adopt Exhibit 1-1 for paving improvements for the listed streets.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Move to approve Exhibit 1-2.
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Second item is call for hearing on proposed assessment. Exhibit 2 contains a resolution calling for hearing on proposed assessment for each of the following. Exhibit 3 is the assessment role. First one is paving improvement number 119, 2022, B2 minutes pavement improvement for those five streets. Exhibit 2-1 is resolution and 3-1 is assessment role. Next resolution would be paving improvement number 116 for Cherrywood. Cherrywood Lane, Exhibit 2-2 is resolution, Exhibit 3-2 is assessment role. Third resolution is storm sewer improvement number 32, Cherrywood Edition. Exhibit 2-3 is resolution and Exhibit 3-3 is assessment role. Next, paving improvement number 118, Homewood Hills, a following streets. Exhibit 2-4 is resolution, 3-4 is assessment role. And 2023 miscellaneous unpaid charges for removal of ice and snow, removal of noxious weed and vegetation. Exhibit 2-5 resolution and Exhibit 3-5 assessment role. Steph recommends the council pass, pass the five resolutions in Exhibit 2 for each of the improvements and the special services charges for the additional assessment. The resolutions call for hearings to be held at 5:30 PM on October 9th, 2023, at the council meeting. So there's five resolutions to pass.
And this is just basically, it's setting them for the open hearing?
Correct.
Move to adopt number 1. Have motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Move to adopt number 2.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Move to adopt number 3.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Move to adopt number 4. I was giving somebody else a chance.
All yours.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
There are motions, we could do them all in one, but they're resolutions, so we can do them separately.
Resolutions, gotta do separate.
Move to adopt number 5.
And second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I just have one item here, this is a conditional use permit for 1260 27th Street. JB Brook Properties has submitted a request for conditional use permit that would allow for an approximately 45-foot by 60-foot addition to the existing warehouse distribution center. Pursuant to City Code Chapter 155, Appendix E, Table 5, warehouses and motor freight terminals are permitted by conditional use only in the B3 General Business District, the zoning of the subject property here. At its September 5th meeting, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit. And then they did not choose to attach any additional conditions and just stuck with the one, the subject property must maintain compliance with all applicable local, state, federal standards and requirements. Following that, you can see what their recommendation was based on. This is a pretty straightforward project, it's low volume, low impact. It's not even going to kick it out past the definition that would require them to pave the whole access drive or anything, although they certainly can if they want to. No concerns from the neighbors, nothing else that really came up regarding the impact on surrounding properties or anything of that nature. So with that, council action is requested.
What was the resolution for the, or the determination of the encroachment on the setback?
Yeah, so there's a few options for that staircase that's kind of projecting or protruding into the setback there. We've discussed potentially just kind of a ladder since it is an emergency only access point, moving the door to the south side of the building. Or if the applicant chooses, he could pursue relief from that requirement through a variance process. At this stage, it's kind of up to the applicant as to which route to go with it. But I'll certainly, I'll work with him to make sure that that's taken care of before we get too far along.
That was the only concern from the planning commission regarding the application is the, that the plan showed an encroachment in the setback prior to. Otherwise, everything else seemed good to go.
Steve?
Mr. Janzak is here, if he wants to give us a brief description of what his plans are with it?
Yeah, so what we're planning-
And what is prompting this conditional use permit?
Yeah, so what we're doing is, we're going to add on 2,700 more square feet to the building to the east. And thankfully, I bought an extra 25 feet of that property in a separate purchase back in 2019, 20. And I'm glad I did. So Frito-Lay's growth has grown. They're trying to consolidate other locations. And what's going to come from, into this one is going to be from Sheldon and Wyndham routes. So what will happen is their drivers will come to the warehouse in Worthington, fill the truck up, and then head back that same morning with a full truck, and then come back in two days and repeat the system. So the 45 by 60 addition onto the building is within the setbacks of the property. I think we actually have 10 feet, 8 inches of room there, so we're, got some security there. But there is a, there's a removable staircase right now. It's made out of metal, and it sits on the east side of the building currently that is an exit, and it wasn't there on the original plans. But Frito-Lay has inspections from a third party, and one of the inspectors had made a comment, we should have another man door there for an exit for safety reasons. So that's why we put it in, like, six months later, just put a door in. And then I had to put a staircase because we didn't want people to fear jumping out of it, or falling out of it, or whatever it may be. So my request was, is there any way we can just put the staircase there? And then Chris brought up that it's actually in the setback. But it is not attached to the building now, currently, and it won't be in the future either. So with Matt reading some of the code and stuff, I, I don't know if there's a gray area where we can just put it back there when we get the addition done? Or do I take the next one of three steps? I would like to avoid putting it on the south side of the building where the loading docks are for snow removal reasons, because it will stick out three to four feet. And then you risk maybe a truck hitting it, which, you know, is minimal, but it can happen. So I'd like to avoid that. My second option was just mount a ladder on the wall of the building, so when you open the door, you'd have to reach around and grab the ladder, or you'd have to jump out of the door. Both are not probably what I would want. Again, safety reasons, if somebody had to hold on to the ladder and climb down to the concrete, slip and fall in inclement weather. You hate for somebody to have to jump out the door. You know, break a leg, fall, roll over, break an arm, injury there. So the safest and best method is to just put the staircase right back on that east wall. I feel. And so that's-
But the, so you're adding two additional routes that are going to be warehousing and-
It'll possibly be three routes, one from Wyndham and two from Sheldon, Iowa. And so the number of drivers in the market here will stay the same. But what they're, Frito-Lay's trying to do is condense like a one route up in Wyndham, a two route down in Sheldon. And apparently, they've calculated they can drive the 20 miles from Sheldon up to Worthington. And I think Highway 60 played the biggest part of it. When we originally were looking to do this project four years ago, they wanted to do Sheldon because of the four lane Highway 60, because they pull stuff out of Sioux City and Sioux Falls and also Beloit, Wisconsin. So Interstate 90, Highway 60 were ideal traffic patterns for them. But then they have a route up in Wyndham, and they want to bring that down here. So the benefit for Worthington is you get a bigger warehouse, a bigger tax base. We are going to do some additional concrete parking. I know we're in code, but they would like to see more concrete too. And I'm willing to spend the money to concrete some of the parking lot. I plan on using all the same contractors. Andy Welp out of Lakefield did the EPS building. McCune Construction did all the concrete. I've got Bob lined up if we can get in before weather. Henning's Construction, excavating out of Adrian. Andy Berg has been my contact there. He's already bid it, you know? And so the only thing I don't have locked in yet is electrician. I used Dan's Electric for the whole building last time, and I understand Dad has passed away. But electrical is only going to be additional warehouse lights. That's all we're doing. There's no heating being put in because it's already there. There's no more plumbing put in, that's already done. So it's just basically adding 2,700 square feet onto the building.
Is there any other people that work there during the day other than your drivers unload and load, or?
Yeah, they just come and go.
Yep.
That's all they do. It's not, nobody's there overnight, nobody's there usually after dark. I mean, there might be people there early in the morning, like 5, 5:30, 6, but their trucks will be loaded and away they go out delivering.
And they go, yep.
Yep, it's very minimal traffic. And that's how we did it last time, too.
Can we, staff, can we add a condition on, that would read something like, not using non-permanent materials for the staircase there? And like, so discouraging like the cement staircase going in there at some time? Now, I know that's not the plan, you know, but.
I suppose you could. I don't know how you're going to get a staircase that's not made out of some kind of permanent material, if you will. Because, so when you talk about a temporary structure, this staircase is going to sit there year round.
Right.
I mean, it has to for an emergency exit point. If you kind of dig into our city code about it, it does fit the definition of a structure there, which is basically stuff that's artificially built up and basically in a permanent location, essentially. A lot of people try to make the argument that, you know, stuff's temporary or whatever. I'm not saying this couldn't easily just be yanked back if it needed to be or something, but.
As I mean, if it's the, if we're talking about steel, what a metal fabricated staircase there would be more advantageous than it, than, than the potential of pouring a concrete staircase there, and, which is less removable, potentially, if it need be, so.
Sure, and to actually allow encroachment into the setback, you do need to issue a variance through that public hearing process. This was a public hearing just for a conditional use permit, so it carries a different weight with state law as to how you advertise that public hearing, so you would need to go through another process for that, which he could still go through if Pat wants to here, and we'd wrap that up next month, and they could still get started on the building, but it would still need to go through that process.
Move for the, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, that wouldn't hold up your construction of the project then, correct?
No, it will not hold us up. I've already talked to Brett Jacobson, and there's a few things we're waiting from EPS on some engineering drawings and specs. And as soon as he reviews those, that he said he can issue a building permit at that point. One thing we're fighting right now, you know, it's the 10th or 11th of, the 11th of September. But right now, time is becoming an issue, and you might not think that. But it became an issue last time we did this, and I incurred a lot of expenses because of cold weather work. Additional expenses, I should say. And I'm trying to avoid that this year, and that's like laying concrete and dirt work. Once we get the concrete and dirt work done, we can put the building up in cold weather because it's going to sit basically on a pad site.
Council?
Move to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Okay, so what would be the next step, then?
If you want to do the stairs on the east side, then you'll have to-
Go through Matt.
-file a variance.
Okay.
Let's get started.
Or money out of my pocket, but what can I do? All right, thank you, all of you, appreciate it.
Okay, on to council committee reports. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Amy?
We had a Water and Light Commission meeting last Monday, and we have somebody who is stepping down. So if you have any ideas for someone, for nominating someone for a Water and Light position, let me know.
Okay, Chris?
No report right now.
Helena?
Today, we had a Nobles County Community Childcare Task Force meeting, and they went over a few of the different projects. They're all outside of Worthington city limits, but there are some different communities such as Rushmore, Ellsworth, and in Adrian where they're looking at adding some childcare slots, which is great to hear. We had to reschedule our town hall to October 11th.
our town hall to October 11. And basically, that will give an overview of what is being done to address the childcare shortage. It was kind of a last-minute change, so there has been some flyers released with that new date.
That's a town hall put on by?
First Children's Finance, that will kind of go over, yeah, what's all been done so far, and how we're trying to
Cool.
add more slots here in Nobles County. For the YMCA, they had, at our last meeting, we had said they had extended an offer, and that has since been accepted by Carrie Olmanson from the Mankato area. So she will be the executive director of the Worthington area YMCA, and she begins in October. So we are gonna welcome her to the community, and then her family will follow at some point. And then we've been having quite a few meetings for the HRA, and we are filling a board position, as well as we are going to be advertising for the position of executive director very soon. So if you know anyone who is looking to fill that position, within the next few days, we should be starting to advertise for that. If anyone has driven by Grand or Cecily, they will see the townhomes that we've been putting up. And the progress is really coming along, so we're really excited about that, to get some more housing in the community. And that is all.
Chad?
The marketing committee, through CBB, and Chamber, and WRDC Forward Worthington, met and have been actively using the Globe's digital marketing package for promotion of things in the community. And so we've put forth a calendar of different events and things in the community to put on that digital marketing. And you'll see it either on whatever social media platforms you're using, and things of that sort. And it's fenced into areas, and we can move areas at certain times of the year if we want. We can add video and things like that. So that's been some of the things that have been happening with that. And that's what I've got for a report.
Okay, Steve?
Tomorrow, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities has put together an emergency medical services working group. And I was, I offered to represent Worthington on that group. We're having our first meeting tomorrow morning. Sounds like much of the agenda is dealing with a legislation that was put together that has, and I'm not at all familiar or really informed as to what the nature of this proposed legislation is, other than we are, like many cities around the state, that are concerned about staffing and the equipment and the availability to provide adequate emergency medical services. And that's what this working group is going to be discussing, and hopefully helping with some legislation that can be brought forward that can provide assistance. So.
Okay, okay. They just have anything?
Move to word. Go ahead.